Evening, everyone. With it being six o'clock, I'd like to call the meetings to a word. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. The United States of America. And you're a law looking people just advance. One nation. Welcome, everybody. I am Commissioner McCall's here up in New Berlin. Hopefully, between fact and honor. And Starwood Lewis can introduce ourselves. Louis is talking, maybe.
Wait, my planning commission.
Amy, my commission.
And Joe, do you want to introduce yourself?
Joe Morrison, Planning Commissioner.
Over to Jim.
Jim, this is Principal Planner.
John, I'm the Associate Planner.
Nick, on Community Development Director.
Paul, no planning major. Thank you. All right, moving on to number three, audience comments. You don't have anybody here in the room. Do they have anybody on Zoom? Yes, we've asked that the person attending in Zoom, please press the right hand button if you're speaking. Stay now. Moving on. Agenda, I don't know for approval of minutes from the last meeting, January seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Did everyone get a chance to review this? Any issues or revisions?
I move to approve January seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
If the approval of minutes was unanimous. Moving on to business items. So starting with the presentation of the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan three item table.
Me and Jim, this is Principal Planner for the city of Port Orchard. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce the city's consultant for working on the comprehensive plan three out of the base for Alex Campbell. Of HBO, L provided overview of economic development element. Utilities element in the introduction for the comprehensive plan. Tonight, we seek your input on the draft introduction. Economic development, all this. Sure, the final draft is scheduled for delivery by June twenty twenty four aligned with what we've heard from the community during our public gathering last year. Last week, you should have received the initial drafts of the piece on its scanning introduction. We've supplemented the packet with revised economic development element, which includes current information related to the city's tax structure. That update was emailed to you earlier today. Introduction element discusses Port Orchard's history, acknowledges the challenges brought by the rapid population growth of the last decade. Utility element guides a group of cities' utilities system for the last twenty years. It's important to be totally momentous, important to support growth without compromising current service levels. Even on a development element, outlines the city's goals and policies for employment, commercial services, and industrial businesses. Your comments tonight were driving until February seventh are important. We envision collecting and finding the comments before the final draft, which will then be presented to the planning commission, like with the two. Planning commissions input may be incorporated in final drafts based on the film. A review of the draft elements, truths, and systems. So regional recording helps us check this adherence to publication. No immediate action is needed tonight, but we ask for your comments by the twelfth seven. Still, it's a time to deliver the final drafts. Now, I'll turn the floor to Mr. Alex Campbell, who guides through the proposals as the C P R guidance on our whole space. Alice.
Hello, Port Orchard Planning Commission. It's great to be back in front of you guys. It's been a little bit since our last meeting, and it's nice to see a few new faces on the planning commission as well. I think Jim provided a great introduction to really the focus of tonight's effort with regards to the comprehensive plan. Our major focus is to dial in the three chapters that Jim had mentioned. And the majority of our update to this point with regards to content is specifically oriented around making sure that the comprehensive plan update is consistent. Primarily with the Kitsap County countywide planning policies and PSRC, you just saw regional councils update requirements. To make sure that we're incorporating and updating the comprehensive plan to meet all of the minimum requirements to get the comprehensive plan certified, which keeps the city eligible for transportation dollars, which obviously is a big priority. But also particularly with planning commission's involvement tonight and bringing the chapter to you guys, this early kind of in our draft process. The intention is to allow the planning commission to provide some feedback based on you guys' experience and knowledge of the city, the firsthand experience that you guys have, and really help us identify some key issues that you guys have specifically with regards to these chapters tonight. Jim mentioned at the last planning commission meeting that we'll be providing these chapters in kind of a regular monthly interval. And the idea is to balance out the amount of content that we have in the comprehensive plan with the amount of effort that you guys will have to put in to provide us some feedback on those chapters. So we don't want to drop off the whole comprehensive plan and say, kind of, good luck, get us comments in a couple of months. But we want to be cognizant that there's a lot of information here. Really front load some of the chapters that we think have a little bit lighter touch with regards to some of the regulatory requirements for this comprehensive plan update. And really start to get some policy feedback from the planning commission with regards to goals and policies contained within the chapters that you guys have. With that being said, one of the pieces that we're bringing forward tonight is the introduction chapter. And maybe counterintuitively, the intro chapter of every comprehensive plan is kind of the most difficult to wrap up early in the process. Really, the introduction chapter is meant to serve as a summary of the rest of the content of the comprehensive plan. So tonight, really, my preference would be to get you guys' feedback, particularly in areas of history, targeted outcomes, and then the idea of connections that the city has in its previous comprehensive plan update. Knowing that all three of these chapters are still very much in draft form, you'll notice that in the packet, there's a couple of areas that we highlight that we're waiting for coordination with other city departments or external agencies from city departments. We're pretty early in the year still. This draft has to be done by June for the entire comprehensive plan. So the coordination efforts are ongoing, and there's still a decent amount of moving parts. Again, just to kind of reemphasize, really, our our goal or my goal for tonight is to get planning commission's feedback, given you guys' unique knowledge and a role in the community for some guidance on policy and goal direction, particularly for these three chapters. And really, I think our efforts are going to be very similar for the next few months with regards to the comprehensive plan update. We'll bring you a few chapters to get some feedback on, give you guys about a month until the next planning commission to digest requests that you guys return feedback to us, and then we'll get that incorporated into a revised complete draft that will come before you again. So in no way are these, is this the last time that you'll see these chapters. Just wanted to provide some overall context on the update process.
Thank you. Does anybody have comments, questions?
Well, I want to do the whole thing once. But then it's seventy six pages to give back to these guys. I will make the request, Jim, the PDF. I can't edit it. I can edit it on my machine because I have it open on Mac at twelve. But it doesn't take to send it back to you, so I'm going to need to have a Word file. I did convert it to Word, and it does show up, and it's feeling that link to the actual lines like normal. So if you send me a Word file, it transposes all these edits back. I have quite a few questions, if you don't mind. I'm sorry. I just go through the twenty twenty four targeted outcomes, and one of the main questions that I kept asking myself. Is this going to get the job done? Is this enough for what Port Orchard is going to be facing in the next twenty years, basically? Looking back, how much technology has changed just in cell phones alone, computing, wireless devices, wireless technologies? I'm very interested to hear what everybody else thinks about them. Is this going to actually look deep enough in the future to get us ready and prepared for what's going to happen to us? So I went through all the outcomes, and I really just wanted to know, you're really worried as how we're not to start with targeted outcomes. We have real issues in this town relative to traffic cars, and cars are largely ignored in this. It's about lights and walking, and I have no issue with that because this is not this house, and I'm really conducive to that. Super well, certain areas are. So I really was curious why we didn't have more about traffic than some of these major things. We have issues on train line, issues on Cedric, and issues on that all. And they're serious. I've been in those lockdowns for thirty minutes sometimes just trying to get through a traffic light. Have an accident in there, and you're turning around and going on the freeway to get to the other. So there's some significant things I think are missing in this. I spent some time talking with my constituents too in the community. I noticed that equitability sneaks in here quite a bit, and a lot of my folks that are especially my age are a bit concerned that that shows up in prominent manner. So one of the questions that I had was, is that a mandatory term that we have to use from the state or the countywide health policies? Or is that something we choose to to bring in from an equitability perspective? Because there's really no more definition for that in my mind. I've been studying this quite a bit, and equitability, standing somebody up, helping them up, is past equitable equality. And when does it stop and when does it start, and how do we manage it? And I have a whole bunch of questions about that, too. So I don't know where to start or stop, but I think it goes through all these comments, but I'd rather not do that. I'd rather just have a conversation about, is this enough probably there? What is the rest of the commission thinking about our future for the next twenty years, looking back? I've lived here since eighty five, so I've seen a lot of change. And I have a lot of, also I have a lot of questions about redevelopment into what? What do we want to do with these statements? Strip malls going to, okay, what to what? More libraries? Is that what you want? What are we trying to do here? So I'm looking for this top plan to be a better roadmap, not just a map. That's a guiding line. Here's what we're talking about. Here's what we're thinking about. And I think we have some ones to do. It's pretty bad. I get it. Stop with some of those just one. What do you think, Lewis, that I just can literally blow the water here?
I think it's going to be outside. You're new, like me. Yeah, so I first we have the doc to, we laid down a few goals at the very end of the doc. I think coming from, and this may be, or this is my first time writing a document, this is something that I do for is for outcome or goal number two, impression, impression development to improve the state centers near housing, etc. So can we provide examples? We have a lot of any land use activities we go to sin. I'm assuming that's also a future display. I think this could demonstrate that we're already working towards this goal. And maybe something just ready to call out. But I think that it's great that we have a lot of goals and outcomes listed, but I think here's example what we're doing actively right now, and we'll build upon that. Hopefully, that's all.
So so if I can, I'd like to to speak to the early comments. First of all, the targeted outcomes, this, these were written with this part of the public outreach process that was in the year twenty sixteen. And so this is what I'll propose when we synthesize things. The additional comments about equity and come directly from PSRC's vision twenty fifty. If you look at vision twenty fifty, race and equity are major themes throughout that document. And so, yes, to some extent, we are looking to ensure that our plan is consistent with that document. But what consistency looks like, that's really great for you to determine. But I I didn't want PSRC to open the first page of our document and say, you haven't added the two new elements of vision twenty fifty to your your introduction of of the planning document. And so, so yes, that is mandated. And the, I did want to point out, the targeted outcome does include driving, walking, biking, driving, and transit infrastructure. So it is a a total transportation statement. And then, of course, there is a transportation element, which give you a lot more detail on on transportation related goals. But again, this is really high level. It's, I think, kind of informing the architecture of the overall plan. There is a lot of mine. So having a huge target of outcomes for each element, it's not going to be a complete list of goals.
Okay, the other, the whole idea of connections to. Sorry. Just the connections element. I found myself wanting to reference this to what this is all, where is this coming from, this whole connection idea? It's not only, there's been very, there's very few with any references in here other than two minutes. And I think we need to be careful about how we bring new tech, new ideas or elements into this without showing references to work. Is it all going to be PSRC? Is it coming from Kitsap County plan? Outcomes, or is this coming from technical someone that says this is the new range of how we should be thinking? I don't know, and I didn't have the time to go and look for that. But I'm seeing, I just have myself asking many times in the doctor. What's the reference to this? Where's this coming from? A lot of my comments are just like, what is this all about? The actions is just one of those.
Yeah, and and that next scheme, I don't know if you were involved in the twenty sixteen updated out of terms of process, but we hired our our city very different than we had far fewer resources, and we hired a team of graduate students, actually, to come and do some public outreach for us. And there the students are the ones who who really, as they did all of these surveys in the community, they kept hearing a theme that kind of boiled down to this connections piece, and people wanting to to be plugged into West One Line, you know, to plug in, you know, to parks and open space networks, giving the physical connection through the community. And so that is the document that exists in the plan today, and it's just continuing into the future unless we hear, you know, that this isn't something that we want in the plan. We just aren't seeking to change what the work that was already done.
And just to expand on that a little bit, I think that that is almost exactly the type of feedback that I was hoping to hear is essentially, why are we approaching certain sections this way, or don't think this goal or policy language necessarily applies, or we need to add new to address current situations? So I think that is extremely valuable feedback as you guys dig into the content of the plan here. And e- even general comments like, we need to make the connections more readily apparent throughout the comprehensive plan as a whole, or tie back to these connections, make them a more prominent piece, for example. And these are, these are just kind of some ideas that I'm throwing, obviously, not kind of trying to direct the conversation in any way. But I think that's the type of feedback that's valuable to us because that sets a direction for us of what we want to update from a content standpoint. I think if there are specific connections or targeted outcomes in here that you guys feel are either outdated based on current conditions or updated conditions at the city, or you want to update or remove or revise, we we can take a look at where these come from and be a little bit more explicit. Because like Nick said, vision twenty fifty from PSRC is is very explicit in in the equity front. And there's a lot of regional goals and policies that touch multiple chapters or elements of our comprehensive plan, ranging from economic development, transportation, climate, housing, land use, a little bit of everything through the equity lens of twenty fifteen. So just to set a realistic expectation, it's something that I think you can expect to see in the document because that's a regulatory checkbox that we have to mark. But I think as you continue your review, PSRC really establishes the box to operate within. There are minimum contents that we have to include, but there's some leeway on how individual cities jurisdictions approach checking that box. So it's it's intentionally meant to be fine tuned at the local level, knowing that every city is a little bit different. So I think that type of input is is valuable. And what we can do, particularly in areas where you feel like you may either not agree or want to remove or significantly modify some connections, is also provide you with some framework of either why it's included or why it has to be included.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Yeah, there's a lot, I had a lot of questions also just about, what does this mean, or what where where is this detail? For example, one of the connections is to connect people to the history of the city through the built environment. On space, that sounds great, but what does it mean? What is that? That we have the label of the built environment to link it to history somehow, a placard? What is that? I don't understand what that tells me other than what it says, but it doesn't tell me in the city or whatever it means in the built environments and connecting people to the history of the built environment. This, this isn't Winthrop, that we have all buildings like Londonworth and Winter that are all theme type history. This is, this is Port Orchard we don't have. So I'm just curious what that means. And also the next one, connecting neighborhoods to the regional trail. I found myself asking, well, is there a regional trail network? Is it published? Where do I see that? Started asking questions about these things. Is there a regional trail network? What's this? What's, is that, I understood the park plan, I'm asking. But I'm curious if there's going to be references to some of these things. So somebody that isn't on the planning commission is going to read this and go, okay, that sounds great. Where do we see it?
I think if you read through the other elements of the plan, you're going to find these references in the goals and policies of the individual chapters. The trails network is applying the transportation element, the basic history and pathway, as well as the plan, all the old networks throughout the city. The parks line, the parks element, the parks plan also does that. And again, that's connecting people to the history. I think there are specific goals and policies that have to look for them. They talk about identifying buildings and really having a kind of wayfinding and just highlighting the history of Port Orchard. And I think the, you read the mayor's guiding principles over there on the wall, I think it says honoring the past without living in the past. And I think that's, you know, that's part of the the goal for the startup regulation here is let's recognize the strong things, let's protect the things that are important, but also not claim the past and and become a deep now.
From the introduction chapter standpoint, too, I think it can be a little bit challenging, similar to our approach of providing you guys on the planning commission with certain chapters in one go as opposed to the entire document. We we want to be cognizant of level of detail in different chapters, knowing that, like Nick said, really, these primary connections get more detailed or are have a more explicit roadmap of how to implement them in other elements. And one one idea listening to the conversation that comes to mind for me is adding information within this primary connection section, essentially under each of these primary connections, pointing people in the right direction to say, if you're interested specifically in how we connect people to the history of the built environment, goal number four, seven, and twelve arbitrary numbers outline this in the land use chapter, for example. I think that we could help point people to where more detailed information is with regard to the primary connections. But I do want to be cognizant that through the context of the introduction section, again, this is meant to be an introduction and provide almost a snapshot of this is what the city of Port Orchard's priorities are for this comprehensive plan update and looking out to the twenty forty four horizon. And I think if we add too much detail and really expand on these, the 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 risk there is just a little content heavy when we have a document in its entirety is is going to be pretty large and detailed already. So I just bring that up as a point of consideration as you guys are putting together comments that we we have a lot of areas to expand on these primary connections and really get detailed into goals and policies of how we implement them. And we will do that process and specific elements or chapters of the comp plan update. But I can definitely see the benefit of directing people to where to find that information in this location, too. So just want to put that out there as a primer as you guys put together comments.
Yeah, perhaps a preamble that talks about the different departments of the city that are going to be linked to this top plan and all the, some of the other key planning documents or plans, if you will, that are out there that are linked to this document, too, would be helpful. Because, you know, pretty much everything could be, but it could be not just the same game. This is comprehensive, and here's what comprehensive means as well. Is it just the planning department, or is it about the engineering department? Is it about the park department? I think it's all departments, but it would be nice to just make sure there's links. And then when you go to the city's website, make sure that you can easily navigate towards like and find pieces that you're looking for that are that are so popular. I did that exercise, and it was a very easy exercise to complete, quite honestly. You know, so anyway, I think you're right. We got a lot of details going on, and I don't want to get overly detailed, but I just want to make sure we set a really good groundwork that tells the citizens of the Port Orchard, this thing is about everything we think about is going to be important in the next twenty years. And our outcomes and plans and our linkages and our connections, this is just two people to other people and people to other places. It's also the connection that the city makes to them itself. You know, the planning department, the engineering department, the park department, the mayor, our any commissions, they're all working together, and that's part of that connection, too. And I think that's an important element that we can build on some way here, at least in a passing way. I had another comment about the history because you asked about the votes and comments on history. I did a budget work with the the historical museum recently, and it just seemed to me where we're talking about bringing people closer to government and making those connections there, we should reach out to them and see if they have a recommendation, let them have this piece, and see if they would be willing to take a look at it. Because I noticed that the maritime element kind of isn't in here. Yeah, it shows up later in the document. They might have a bit of a nice way to make a more robust history of Port Orchard section for us. They're just asking this world museum or society over there to see if they have any thoughts or anything about this is, they probably will have written with it. So just just a thought there about the history section as well. Because I don't want to make this as real a meeting with the former conference. So I'll pair it with that people this time. So.
Hey, yeah, I'll get my closer. Joe, do you have any comments?
Uh, I think it's interesting. It would be interesting to ask Alex. So how are you going to? You know, Commissioner Wright has a lot of comments. I've probably got thoughts, too. I'm sure some of the other planning commissioners have thoughts, and you're going to be giving us a couple of chapters every month. How are you going to adjudicate or process multiple comments from multiple stakeholders into your process?
Yeah, yeah, great, great question. So that's that's really a part of really every updater kind of planning policy material that we do, particularly from a public engagement standpoint, is we get a lot of information, and a lot of times the information can conflict or potentially negate one another. So that that is a key item for us is how do we aggregate what we heard and then put it together in a singular chapter that reflects what we heard. And really, our key driver is coordination with city staff. So what we're going to do is we'll take all of the comments that we receive, compile all of that information, and we have all of that in what is essentially a living document. The chapter one introduction chapter, planning commission comments, and it includes everything. And it's it's a dense document, but what we go through is we start to go through and pare that down in association with city staff. So really, city staff, Nick and Jim are the primary drivers of the project. So what we'll do is we'll aggregate the information. I think there's going to be certain items that can be considered non starters, either feedback that is just logistically not the right location to include that feedback potentially, or is information that is outside of the scope of a comprehensive plan update. Not to say that we can't note it for other consideration or apply it maybe somewhere a little bit more relevant. But really, ba- based on the content, what we're going to do in the shortest way is aggregate that and coordinate with city staff to figure out, okay, so based on this information, what do we need to update? And when do we need to get it updated by? So that way, we can return a complete full draft to you guys by our commerce grand deadline. So that's that's probably not a very detailed or satisfying answer, but essentially what we're going to do is any But essentially what we're going to do is anything that we hear back from you guys in the format that you provided to us, whether it's bullet points in a Word document, review comments on a Word document, uh, an email with a few sentences, whatever it may be, uh, we'll take any feedback that you guys are willing to provide. Uh, we'll take all of that feedback, uh, attach it to the right place in the document based on the comments, uh, coordinate with city staff and fine tune and revise. Uh, so it's going to be a lot of content editing.
So you'll revise with city staff and then it will go, it's not coming back before us, right?
To confirm, this is to be confirmed with Jim, but my intention is since we'll be regularly providing you, uh, different chapters on a monthly basis. My inclination is the next time that you'll see, uh, the document is probably at the complete whole draft.
Okay, okay.
Jim, if you, Jim, Nick, if you guys want to confirm that, this won't be the last time that you see it though.
No, that's, I don't really want to give you until the 27th, five or six months. Uh, initially, we're going to take it to the various subdivision councils, get their input as well. Get that back page, we all need to kind of fine tune things. Ultimately, I think the final draft that you're going to see will be delivered sometime at the end of May. So hopefully it's in front of June because that's when we get to have it delivered. Now, that's just the first draft of it. So final drafts, there'll be more discussion after. I don't want to, I don't want to imply that June is the end all for all of this process.
Okay.
If there's something that you comment on that we can't do or that we have questions about, we'll probably reach out individually to to get clarification. And, um, I I think what you were describing, Alex, um, there's a little bit of an echo in in the room here, but I I I think what we're talking about is where you got about the comment matrix of all the comments from all the line commissioners and we'll sort of point to where in the timeline we've addressed that, or if we don't address something, we'll explain why. If we do address it, we'll tell you where and how it goes to address.
Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to being helpful. I know our city relies on this, uh, comprehensive plan to guide its policies and its planning and permitting activity, um, and its future. And so you need a document that you can rely on for that. We'll try to we'll try to be relevant, thoughtful, but not exhaustive, or at least I will.
All right, time to turn comments to you by the 27th.
Yeah, that's, uh, is that right? Yeah, that's, that's correct. And, um, I I think that if if anyone else has any observations about the document today, I mean, I I think the things that Wayne was sharing, um, are very good and to kind of discuss and get some responses from staff because it will make your, um, your, your comments more informative to us. So if anyone else has any ideas, I think it would be great to, um, to hear them. And, um, I also did want to point out, I hope you mentioned this, but we, we did send out the city's tax information and updated that comment about chapters. If you received that in an email, we just wanted you to have that context for how our our city finances have changed over the last eight years as you've been considering comments to that chapter.
One question, and this may be a question for Alex. Is the SWOT analysis required or does it scope?
For the economic development elements.
Sorry, I heard a little bit of that. Just to confirm, you asked if a SWOT analysis was part of the scope of the economic piece?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have that specifically. Uh, what we've done that's similar to kind of a traditional SWOT analysis is, uh, we used for this update in particular, again, just to kind of attach this to our regulatory requirement. Uh, we use Commerce's update checklist and PSRC's 20 vision checklist to really set the stage for areas that uh, have to be updated or areas of the city's comprehensive plan that's already checked in the box. Um, so from kind of the the matrix approach, that's, that's what we've done. And then outside of that, really kind of the the existing conditions analysis isn't obviously the same as a SWOT analysis, but I think what that does is it provides a lot of similar baseline information of what's the current economic and development activity in this city from a snapshot standpoint as we undergo, uh, some of these updates. So I think with the commerce update checklist, the PSRC's 20 vision, I'm sorry, PSRC's Vision 2050 checklist and the existing conditions analysis, um, those lend towards similar information you might get from a SWOT analysis, but I don't think that we have that specifically, uh, identified as a group.
Okay, and will you have a submission for PSRC?
Yeah, I think the the PSRC processes, we have a checklist of, we have to just point to the specific things you're asking for. Um, but I I did want to mention, um, um, Lewis and Wayne that I I don't know if there are limitations that we gave you the um, initial conditions report and, um, I think there was a gap analysis as well. And I don't know, we, I don't know, we actually provided a gap analysis that we've done to the line commission, um, Alex, but that that also may be something, uh, I I certainly should provide the initial conditions report with the new line commissioners and, um, and about our whole, I think we're updating that right now. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just ask a dumb question because it's kind of hard to hear. Did you say that you were going to provide Lewis with a gap analysis?
We we are working on updating a gap analysis. That's more of an internal working document. So I don't know if that's really intended to be uh, to be shared, but we'll talk about whether it makes sense to put that out and, uh, we'll get back to you. But we are, there, there was some additional legislation passed and I think PSRC updated their checklist. So we're, we're looking to expand the gap analysis to address the addition criteria that brought to us.
Okay, I'm, I'm probably somewhat interested in that a little bit anyway, but just that's food for thought later. Sorry to take us off the rails. Thank you. Pardon me.
We will have feedback back to staff. Business item, I be the director's report about this.
I don't have a whole lot to report tonight. I did want to share with everyone that, uh, Councilmember Chang graciously invited the staff to her to do ADU. But she, uh, is pre completed and so, um, it's exciting to see that project happen and, uh, add to the house in Stockholm, Port Orchard and, uh, we're, uh, as a county, Paul's vote has really been spearheading this, but the all the cities in the county have been working together and we're we're talking about the next building code changer coming up with some off the shelf, um, accessory building unit plans that anybody can take and use to build accessory building units to streamline the process. And so, uh, I think that Council member change project is one I want to share with the, uh, the the group and obviously there's, um, intellectual property rights associated with architectural plans. So the architect has to release those to use them, but, um, it's, uh, it's nice to see that project for, or there is a small scale, uh, housing, uh, uh, sort of middle house.
Seen the pictures, it looks pretty, it turned out a little.
A very distinctive Scandinavian.
Any other business for the, uh, for state goodie or? But that, I thought we'll go ahead and adjourn you. Hi, everybody.
Great job, Tyler.